Good evening. Welcome to tonight's forum for city council candidates for Petaluma City Council. We're cosponsored this evening, happily, by the League of Women Voters of Sonoma County, the Petaluma Argus Courier, and the Petaluma branch of AAUW, American Association of University Women. And special thanks goes to our Petaluma Community Access Television, who are filming live, and they will be rebroadcasting several times over the next month on Channel 27. I'm Kathy Schmidt, and I'm your moderator for the evening. There are six candidates up here vying for three city council seats. Before I introduce you to them, and you can read their names, I will tell you what the format for tonight's evening is. We start with each candidate with two minutes of their prepared opening statement. I will then pose questions that have been prepared by the cosponsors and also from the written questions that we received from the audience. Following that, the candidates will have one minute for their prepared closing statement. They've drawn lots for the seating arrangement and speaking order, so let me introduce you in that order. And we start with Alicia, Harries, Jason Davies, Mike Healy, Gabe Kearney, Kathy Miller, and Tiffany Renee. And candidates, I'd like to direct your attention to our timekeepers. We have Rosalie Gilmore from the League of Women Voters and Gail Hooley from AAUW of Petaluma. When you see the yellow card, that means 15 seconds left remaining for whatever you're saying. When you see the red card, it means stop, finish your sentence, and stop. And we really need your cooperation in staying on schedule. So with that, let's begin. And our first candidate, Alicia Harries, I'm sorry, two-minute opening statement.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alicia K. Harries, and I am running for Petaluma City Council. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Schmidt for moderating, as well as the AAUW, League of Women Voters, Argus Courier, and City of Petaluma for hosting tonight's forum. And I just want to put a precursor in there that I am nursing a, I'm coming off a cold, so I'm very congested, so bear with me in that regard. I want to reflect that my leadership and my experience is, it's reflected in a variety of ways. I represent you as the Officer-at-Large to the Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women. I am also a Petaluma Planning Commissioner, an active community volunteer, and community leader. My professional experience expands nearly 20 years in business administration, and I currently work at BioMarin Pharmaceutical, which is a small biotech based in Marin County. Issues that are very important to me in this campaign, top priorities, would be economic development and fiscal responsibility, parks, playfields, open space, and traffic relief. I'm running for city council because I've been the neighbor down at City Hall that didn't feel heard. And I've witnessed firsthand what happens when decision-makers are not responsive. And I believe that we deserve leadership that is responsive. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason Davies.
I want to thank the sponsors for hosting this forum. I look forward to a great evening. I'm Jason Davies, and I'm running for city council. I currently serve as Chair of the Technology Advisory Committee. I'm running to bring new sustainable revenues and new fresh leadership to the council at a time when we need funding. We have critical infrastructure projects that need to be going forward. I want to help bring new revenue to make that happen. I have a degree in Politics and Environmental Studies with an emphasis on policy and planning, but for the last 20 years, I've been focused on the technology industry, an industry identified in our economic development plan as a key area for growth and opportunity, where we can get high-paying jobs that will lead to improving our finances so that we can fix our problems. At the same time, I'm mindful of the very reason that people come here, the quality of life, the environment, the location of the Bay Area, these are all pluses. I want to make sure that as we grow and as we develop, that we do it in a way that we protect these precious resources and our quality of life. I hope to have your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Mike Healy.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Argus Courier, and AAUW for sponsoring this event. And I'm thrilled to see such a strong turnout here tonight, and I know more people will be watching on television. I'm Mike Healy. I'm finishing my third term, my 12th year, on the city council, so I'm not going to use my time to introduce yourself, introduce myself to you, because I think you probably have an idea, and we'll certainly be talking about issues as the night goes on. I just want to jump in to talk a little bit more in depth about one issue that's come up lately, and that has to do with the Democratic Central Committee's endorsements in this race. And in particular, as both newspapers have reported, our mayor, David Glass, went up and spoke against Mr. Kearney as an endorsee of the Central Committee. And the reason he cited was Mr. Kearney's failure to support Glass, and instead of supporting me, for this Oversight Board position. And you're thinking, what's an Oversight Board, and why should I care? The Oversight Board is a creature that we've had to set up under state law to wind down the actions of our redevelopment agency. And most of the members of that are actually from agencies that could be somewhat hostile to the city's interests, because if we don't get the money, their agencies will. And we have $7.5 million set aside in there for the Rainier project, and I think that's a very important project for the future of this community. Mr. Glass and I disagree on that, but that's why I got the position, and I'm thankful for Mr. Kearney's support in getting that position. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate, Gabe Kearney.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the sponsors tonight. My name is Gabe Kearney. I'm running for a full term on the city council. I was sworn in onto the city council in March of 2011, and since then have been serving with pleasure on the city council and serving the community in the best way that I know how. I started getting involved in Petaluma politics when I was 16 years old, when I saw something going on at City Hall while watching the city council meetings on PCA that I didn't think was right. And so I drove down here and spoke for a group of people that I thought needed to have a voice at City Hall. And since then, I've been following the meetings and have been involved in the community. I have over 12 years of experience sitting on different boards and commissions in this community, four years on the Mental Health Board for the county, three years on the Community Development Committee for the county, and one great year on the Tree Advisory Committee for the City of Petaluma. During that time, I've seen our city grow, and I've seen our city go through some tough economic times. I think since I've been on the council, it's been proven that I will do what's best for this community, to bring more revenue in, to bring financial stability to our community so we don't have to worry about laying off any more employees, and we can start fixing the problems that we have and keep this community moving forward. Hopefully, on November 6, you'll vote for me and keep me on the city council for four more years. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate, Kathy Miller.
Good evening. Good evening. Try again. Good evening. My name is Kathy Miller, and I'm running for the city council. Just to give you a little bit of my background, I am a local businesswoman and attorney. I am a former Planning Commissioner here in Petaluma. I served three years on the Planning Commission, one year as the Chair, another year as the Vice Chair. During the time that I was on the Planning Commission, we went through the public hearing process and the review of the General Plan 2025 that is currently in place here in Petaluma. I also served on the Petaluma Development Code Advisory Committee. Another activity that I've been involved in here in Petaluma is the Petaluma Friends of Recreation. I've been involved in Petaluma Friends of Recreation since the beginning. I'm proud to be part of the group of Petaluma citizens that gathered 5,200 signatures and placed Measure X on the November ballot. I moved here 12 years ago because my husband and I thought it would be a great place to raise our children, and it has been. But I'm running because I believe we can make it better. We can do a better job of attracting and retaining businesses and jobs, a better job of increasing our revenues so we can fix our roads and restore some of the critical services that we have had to cut. We can do a better job with parks and wrecks as well. I have the experience and leadership skills Petaluma needs to make the most of our historic and beautiful town going forward, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate, Tiffany Renee.
Good evening. Thank you to the Argus Courier, AAUW, the League of Women Voters, and PCA for hosting tonight. It's a great pleasure to be here and to see so many faces out, to come out and listen to what we have to say. It's an important election, and I'm running for reelection because I have the real-life experiences that our city needs to get through these difficult times. I am the first Latina elected to the Petaluma City Council, and I'm the first in my family to go to college. I lost my father to a tragic murder when I was 16 and learned how to be on my own. I had two children by the time I was 19 and had to put myself through college and eventually went on to earn a master's degree in integral ecology and got very involved in politics here in the city. I've been working on issues for the city council in various ways for about almost eight years now. And through that time, I have been able to set policies that I believe will continue to protect our quality of life, that will improve our ability to create jobs in the city and in the region, and to protect people that don't have a voice and need a voice here at City Hall. I have been on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, where I've been able to steer over $250 million in regional infrastructure projects, road projects, bikes and trails, and as well as serving on the Golden Gate Transportation District Bridge and Highway and Transportation District, where I've been able to bring about $50 million in transit improvements to the North Bay as well, to improve transitability for the North Bay. These are the kinds of things that we need to do to keep our economy chugging, and I look forward to earning your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll begin with the questions. I remind the candidates, we have one and a half minutes, and to keep your eye on the timekeepers. First question, and we'll begin with Alicia. How do you propose to balance the city's budget in the next four years? And would your plan include pension reform for existing employees and future employees?
Balancing the budget, it's something that's certainly important to me. I think we need to ensure that we are living within our means, without a doubt. And so, in that regard, I think that we have to be very responsible about how we go about looking at where we're putting the funds that we have in play and ensuring that as we go about in the future, we're not just further indebted the younger generations. And so for me, we need to continue to practice, or we should put in play, sound economic development practices. And the revenues that we're bringing into our community are based on head-of-household jobs and tourism revenues. And in terms of pension reform, we definitely have to have it. I'm glad that we've moved to a two-tier in some aspects of our community, but we have to continue that dialogue. And I am prepared to have that. They're hard discussions, but I think it's necessary, again, that we're funding things in a sound way to ensure that we are not further indebted the next generations.
Thank you, Jason. Same question.
Thank you for the question. Well, balancing the budget is not an option, it's the law. And when you have a $162 million budget, and we're looking at estimates of $142 million, we're going to have a little bit of shortfall. So it's key that we look as much as possible, turn every stone possible, to find where there are areas to cut, if there are. But in addition to that, I want to focus on getting more revenues into town. And there's a lot of ways that we can do that. Alicia mentioned a couple, but one thing that we need to look at is the garbage franchise opportunity. Extending that contract could bring us some more revenues, so that would be something I would look at. It's something that's been talked about. We also need to look at other ways to make revenues. We have an auto extension drive that was just put in, which should help to get more people to more easily find where they can buy cars. But more importantly, we have a 30% vacancy rate in our office parks. I have a background that spans around 20 years in the technology industry. Getting those offices filled is key. And with my background as well in marketing, I've always, I've already been consulting with the Economic Development Manager to help with her attraction plan, to bring more businesses to town. In addition to that, we need to look creatively at potentially selling wastewater that's been treated. Currently, we're paying to have it taken away, and I think that's a commodity we should look at. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mike, same question.
Yeah, thank you. So the city's general fund budget, which is the most critical piece of it, is, has dropped from about $47 million a year at the peak of the economy to about $32.5 million today. And we have made cuts to balance the budget, which, as Jason mentioned, is the law. And some of those cuts have impacted service levels to the community in ways that people notice. So we have less police officers, park maintenance is way down, street maintenance has been reduced from an already inadequate level, street lights, the list goes on. We're not even funding replacement vehicles for the fire department at this point. So, you know, the good news is that it's probably not going to get worse. We now have the Target Center and the Friedman Centers coming forward a year from now. Those will bring about $2 to $4 million a year total. So that's still not enough to get us back to where we were. And I do, I do think those are the, I supported both of those. I do think those are the last of the big shopping centers we're going to see, and that's fine. And I do applaud the, our bargaining units who have agreed to second-tier pension reform. I think that's going to be a continuing discussion going forward, as other cities in the region and the state, and some of the lawsuits out of places like San Jose and San Diego move forward, and the governor had his issues as well. So I think, you know, that's going to be a continuing source of dialogue on pension reform over the next several years, and I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for staying on time. Same question, Gabe.
So since taking office in March of 2011, I've been doing the work to balance our budget, and I have been doing the work to bring jobs to our community. One of the first votes I took on the city council was to reduce the linkage fee. The linkage fee is a fee associated with businesses expanding, or, and, you know, they pay the money to us, and that goes to help with low-income housing. When we lowered that fee, we saw three large businesses move to town within the next four months. So that's direct action that was taken, and we saw results. Doing things like that on the city council is what you want us up here to do, not to talk about lofty ideas of how we might bring businesses to town. You want people that have actually done the work to bring businesses to town. On that same note, I voted for Deer Creek. I reviewed Deer Creek when it came to me at the Planning Commission, worked with the requests from the neighbors to make sure that was put into the project, and voted to approve the site plan and architectural review. And thankfully, we'll see that project going forward soon. It's important that we look, when we look at the budget, we look at what we have left, and it's $32.5 million, as has been mentioned. There's not much more we can cut. We're down roughly 30 people in our police department. We only have 12 paramedics in the fire department, whereas there's not much more we can cut other than what we've already done so far, so we need to look at revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy.
Yes, and I would echo some of what Gabe said. There's not much more that can be cut out of our current budget. We have unfilled and frozen vacancies in the police department. We have firefighting equipment and ambulances that need to be replaced, that we have no money to replace. We really have to bring jobs and revenue to town. I think it's terrific that we have a development, Economic Development Director. Ingrid is doing a great job. She's bringing businesses to town. We need to make sure that we keep that position funded. I think we're going to see revenues from the Deer Creek development, which I am in support of, and from the Regency development, which I am also in support of. I think we're also going to see some revenue from Measure X, if that's passed. That has the ability to bolster tourism in town. The field component of Measure X will allow local lacrosse clubs and soccer clubs to host tournaments. And when tournaments happen in Petaluma, people come to town, and they stay in hotels, and they eat in our restaurants. So we really have to concentrate on the revenue piece. I think lowering the impact fees, which the city council just did, was an excellent idea. We need to roll out the welcome mat for businesses. With respect to pension reform, it's a very complicated topic, but I'm very glad that we've got second-tier benefits in place for some of our public safety employees, and I know that the city is continuing to negotiate with other employees on the second-tier benefits as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany.
Thank you. I think you're hearing a theme here. The issue is not the cost problem. We've dealt with that over the last, even before my time, last five, five and a half years. It's really a revenue problem at this point. And so, as we've been able to reduce our costs to the greatest degree possible, I have fought to protect our public safety, ensuring that we don't lay off more officers and that we're able to contain our ability to serve the public in emergency situations. As a small business owner, I was very interested to see an economic development plan developed. I was part of that process in the workshops and helped to find money for the city to hire our Economic Development Manager. That position has been, I think, one of the key successes for the city over the last couple of years, is we've been able to focus our, our brand, actually, on refocusing what we're doing in Petaluma and being able to outreach that, and then having someone there that can be an advocate for businesses and for Petaluma. So that's been an exciting piece of the pie in terms of being able to increase revenues. And then additionally, being able to stabilize our property values. I've been able to work with community groups to, as well as state and federal officials, to help protect homeowners and renters from foreclosures. And that's going to be key as we look to see more revenues in the future.
Thank you. I'll tell you, as I'm looking through the questions, most everything has an economic base, so there may be some repetition. For one of them, and this one, we begin with Jason Davies. What are, I'm sorry, what are your transportation priorities and how would you fund them?
Well, my transportation priorities are tied to revenue. And we need to have people that actually have business experience that know how to bring revenue into our town. One of the issues relates to redevelopment funds that are lost, so that's a challenge. And I'm pleased that our mayor and Mr. Healy have spent some efforts there in trying to retain those funds. But there's going to be some issues with traffic. And I actually have an article here about the Rainier Connector that won't open until 2020, potentially. So we're going to have some traffic. We need to encourage alternative transportation. I'm pleased that we've had more people riding the buses, which is great. I just started a local business that's a pedal cab company, actually, and I want to encourage more people to ride their bikes and also, in addition to that, walk. But no question, we need revenues in order to fund our critical transportation issues in terms of our roads and whatnot. And one area, again, would be something I mentioned previously, is there are direct impacts from garbage trucks. We can negotiate impact fees that are directly related to that and fund our roads that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Healy.
90 seconds, huh? So I served on the SMARTboard for three years when they had no money at all. So now that they just don't have enough money, I regard that as a vast improvement, and I'm glad to see them moving forward with construction. I want to make sure that Corona Station gets built soon now, too. You're seeing one set of 101 projects wrap up. You're now going to see another set of 101 projects get underway. My theory is, they have about as much under construction at any one time as the populace is willing to tolerate, and so the good news is that's going to continue until we get that job done. I am a big supporter of the Rainier project, as I mentioned before. It is included in our impact fees. We need to save the redevelopment funding. I've made one trip to Sacramento. We'll be getting even more active on that. And when you go door-to-door, the one issue people keep talking about is streets, streets, streets. Why can't you maintain the streets? What's up with the potholes? And the fundamental problem there is we just don't have the money to spend on a regular annual basis for street maintenance, and we need to find ways to grow that pie. And I do think extending the garbage franchise for an additional period of years at no cost to ratepayers, and the garbage franchisee has offered to give us a half a million dollars extra a year in revenues in exchange for that extension. I think that should all be dedicated to street maintenance, because those garbage trucks are the heaviest things on our residential streets on a regular basis. And then we need to keep looking for additional funds that we can add into that mix as well.
Thank you. Gabe Kearney.
So I think you're going to hear all of us say that there's not nearly enough money going into repairing our roads, and I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I think we need up to almost $9 million a year to maintain our roads at the adequate level that is needed. But as you heard earlier, that's a third of our general fund budget, and it's just not sustainable. Since I've been on the Transit Advisory Board for the past two years, we've seen a huge increase in bus ridership. That's not thanks to the work I've solely been doing, it's thanks to a lot of people that are working hard in our city to promote the buses. We have a transit system that's working great. We have more bus riders than ever before. One of the programs that I did bring forward at the Transit Advisory Committee was a program to allow for those students that are eligible for free or reduced lunch to get a free or reduced bus pass with the City of Petaluma. That is taking an issue, the transit problem, finding a solution, and getting it implemented. So now, a student that is eligible for free or reduced lunch can go to their school office in the Petaluma City Schools and get a reduced-cost bus pass. That's going to help us with ridership, which then also helps us with getting increased federal funding for our buses, and helps incredibly. That's what I've been doing for transit. That's what I'll continue to do for transit for the next four years, when elected in November. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you. Kathy Miller.
I think it was on. I don't know, just maybe get closer to it.
Okay, so the, the big, obviously, roads are the huge issue. I've been out walking precincts and wearing out perfectly good pairs of shoes, and every person that I talk to complains about the roads. So we really have to bring in some revenues to fix our roads. Extending the garbage franchise fee, $500,000 a year dedicated to roads, I think is a good start, and I think it's something that we need to look at seriously and try and get that implemented. I'm also a big proponent of Rainier. I think Rainier is very important. As someone who drives lots of car pools across town all the time, I can't tell you how often I wished that Rainier had been built, and I will work tirelessly to get Rainier built. Public transit, we do have more people riding the buses. I think that's great. When I drive by the bus stop with my carpool, I see lots of kids at Kennelworth Junior High getting on that bus. So I think that's a terrific program, and we're definitely using public transit more, and I think that's great. That's really, that's really it. It really comes down to, I think, the revenues and getting the revenues in so that we can make some of these improvements that we need to make. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tiffany Renee.
Thank you. As someone that serves on a number of regional boards that are directly dealing with transportation issues, I've had some great opportunity to see what's coming. And in terms of our transportation in regard to transit, the process that we're currently going through in the One Bay Area Grant process and the Sustainable Community Strategy that's happening through the nine Bay Area counties is putting the Sonoma County and Marin County at a disadvantage, because we are rural counties, and we have a lot of road miles. And the plan is really looking at reducing road mile costs for transit. And so it's going to be ever more important that we have people like myself who can really advocate for transportation and transit issues in the North Bay, and I've continued to do that, serving in that capacity. We're going to need to look at how to reduce operating costs throughout the North Bay so that we can continue to bring in those federal dollars. We're going to have to have strong leadership in that area. I've also brought very strong leadership in the way of looking at the city's current deficit in terms of our deferred maintenance, and really putting on the table what are the costs that we're not funding at this time, and what are the revenue needs that we need to look at. And looking at that sales tax issue was a big piece of that. So that's something that we're going to have to talk to the voters about, I believe, in the next couple of years, because the deficit is huge.
Thank you. Alicia Harries.
Since I am a commuter to Marin County, I am traversing to San Rafael five days a week, and so the Smart Train cannot come fast enough, in my opinion. And outside of that, I am highly supportive of getting 101 widened through the Petaluma Corridor, but I do believe that isn't going to occur until but I do believe that isn't going to occur until 2020. So for me, let's complete the East Washington and Old Red interchange projects. And let's, as other candidates have mentioned, let's increase ridership on Petaluma Transit. It is at an all-time high. Most of that ridership's on the east side. Let's make sure that's on the west side, too. And so that we have more point-to-point service and we're traversing more of this community, which will allow our residents to have somebody else take the wheel. And beyond that, let's ensure that the way that we can get around our community in terms of the way we walk and we bike, let's make those pathways safe and well-lit and clear markings for us to traverse this community. And in terms of funding, of course, economic development by way of tourism, bringing in those revenues for retail. And also, I believe that we have grant opportunities. And one example would be Safe Fruits to Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Mike Healy. And you need to speak a little closer to the mic, I guess. If elected, what two, top two issues do you intend to address? Top two issues?
I would say the first one is trying to grow our local economy, which would also bring more jobs to the town and increase our local tax revenues. That's absolutely essential for a variety of reasons. And as I mentioned, you know, with the Target Center approved and now the Friedman Center approved, both of which are going to bring a lot of jobs, but not terribly high-paying jobs, because retail is what it is, I think we can focus, shift our gears and focus on trying to grow the kinds of jobs in the community that create head-of-household jobs. So I'd say that's, and allow people to afford to live here and raise a family and everything like that. And my second job, I'd say is, I'd say streets, quite frankly. That's what's on people's minds. And we really need to get serious about that. We've had, you know, it's been talked about for years and years and years. And we've had different efforts. But that's, it's gotten to the point where our streets keep declining a couple of percentage points on this 100-point scale every year. And we just need to get serious about it and come together as a community and find a solution, because what we've been doing hasn't worked.
Thank you. Gabe Kearney?
So the first issue I'll address is public safety. If we improve our public safety here in Petaluma, we'll be able to bring head-of-household jobs to Petaluma. We're down positions, as I mentioned before, in the police department. And we have more positions in the fire department. We'll be hiring two in January and three in the not-too-distant future after that. In order to be able to do that, in order to have a robust public safety program, which we all want and deserve in our community, we need to bring the next thing, which is the next topic that I would focus on, and that's long-term financial stability. Without having a healthy reserve, which our reserves currently aren't at a healthy level, we're not going to be able to plan for what might happen in the future. And it's important that we build a reserve, not only for our general fund, but for our vehicle maintenance. So, you know, when we look at the fire truck that's at Station Two, that's nearing the end of its service life, we have money available to replace it. So that way, if there's a fire in one of our larger buildings, we have the right tools for our firefighters to use to fight that fire. Making sure our community is safe and has a long-term economic stability are the two things that I will continue to focus on for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Miller?
So my top two issues, if elected, would be jobs. We need to retain and attract jobs here in Petaluma. And from jobs follow revenues. And we need the revenues. I mean, that's a common theme that you're hearing up here, is there's just not enough money to keep the services that we want, to maintain the level of service that we want, and that we expect, and quite frankly, that we deserve. So my first priority would be jobs and attracting businesses so that we can get our revenues back up to a sustainable level. My second priority, and this also flows from the revenues, is to restore some of the services that have been impacted by the budget. And those include street repair and maintenance, public safety, and parks and rec. So those are my two, those are my two priorities. And like I said, it all comes from, it all comes out of the revenue piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Renee?
Thank you. Certainly, in the work that I've been doing, it's about protecting the funding that we have access to so that we can complete the critical infrastructure projects that create jobs in this region. I have been working to secure money for all of our interchanges that need updating, including the Petaluma River Bridges. And we're seeking funding currently for the 101 widening, which is really critical, because most people don't realize, but in order to connect our bicycle trail to Marin County, we need the 101 widened. And that will really increase our tourism ability. So the other side, in terms of revenues, is to really focus our ability to create jobs in the areas of clean green technology and energy efficiency. Sonoma Clean Power is something that I've been working on, that will come through the county to be able to provide renewable energy and efficiency programs for homes and businesses. And then, looking at agriculture and health and tourism as ways that we can grow the economy. By increasing our hotels and our beds in Petaluma, we'll be able to increase revenues to our TOT fund, and that can feed into our general fund. From there, then we have the ability to increase our services again and bring them back up to the levels that we had in 2007 and 2008. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia? Excuse me?
I continue to advocate for fiscal responsibility. I think that we have to ensure that we are living within our means, again, so we are not pushing our debt down to the next generations. And beyond that, when we talk about economic development, that's critical to me. I mean, I work at a company that has grown in the last over six years from 300 to over 1,000 people. And we have, instead of coming north, they took 300 of us and they took us down south to San Rafael. Well, we have just given quite a boon to that local economy. And I would have loved to seen that come up here to Petaluma. So when we talk about bringing opportunities, I'm thinking tourism, of course, is critical, but healthcare opportunities, high-tech sector jobs, because what you have with that opportunity is head of household wages. You have full benefits. You generally can afford to buy a home. So what does that do? That just recirculates right back into our community, and we're rooting and we're growing. And then, as we talk about economic development, tourism, we need to capitalize on what we have as our natural resources, and then go beyond that and increase our tourism. And when we consider infrastructure, to me, that is to increase the places where people have to stay in our community by ways of hotels. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jason Davies?
Thank you for the question. Well, if I have to boil it down to two, I would say jobs and quality of life. And there's definitely a connection between the two. A company I was working for that brought me to Petaluma back in 2000 came to Petaluma because of the quality of life. That really makes an impact for companies. If you have an area with a quality of life and environment that Petaluma has, while still being in the proximity to San Francisco, it's an excellent opportunity to drive more business into Petaluma. Like I mentioned earlier, we do have a 30% vacancy rate in our office parks. We need to fill those. And I've been working in marketing for nearly 20 years. These are the kinds of tools and experiences you need to actually build an attraction program. I've already been consulting with our economic development manager, giving her some ideas on how to target companies to be proactive and bring them into town. I've been interviewing companies for my role as tech advisory chair. One of the companies I interviewed was LabCon, based here. They're doing manufacturing, diversified manufacturing. They also feed into green energy. They just put a solar panel installation on their, excuse me, on their plant that's getting 30% energy. I did another testimonial with Enphase. They're making microinverters for solar panels. They are one of the leading manufacturers of these products. They have about 300 employees, most of whom live in Petaluma. That's how we can bring more revenues while maintaining our quality of life.
Thank you. Next question is, do you support the Petaluma Parks Parcel Tax Measure on the November 6 ballot, and why? And we begin with Gabe Kearney.
Yes, I do. I support this ballot measure, and I have since day one. When I first met with Carol and a couple other volunteers at a local coffee shop, and they presented the idea to me, I said from day one, I'm supportive of this. The reason why I'm supportive of it is I grew up in this community. I saw, I've seen the parks that we have here, and I've seen the level of services that have dwindled since my childhood here. And so, it's important for us to be able to pass this ballot measure in November. And that $52 a year from every household will go to improving the existing parks, improving the Polyclass Performing Arts Center right across the street from us here. And it will also go to increasing the amount of ball fields that we have. We've all seen what new ball fields can do for our Little League teams. Petaluma National just got a brand-new team, field right up the street from us this past year. Who's to say if we don't build new fields on the other side of town, we can have another championship team come from Petaluma over there? So it's important that we pass this. It's $52 a year, and I think that will help us to create a more vibrant park system in our community and support the arts as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Miller?
Only 90 seconds, huh? Okay. Yes, I support the Petaluma Parks Parcel Tax Measure, Measure X. I have been involved with the Petaluma Friends of Recreation since the beginning. We have worked tirelessly over the last two years to craft the ballot language, to include a wide variety of projects, to make it the best for the community that we possibly can. There is an exemption that seniors can apply for. It's $52 a year for a residential parcel. It goes 15 years. It will raise $12 million, and it will go to eight designated projects. Citizens Oversight Committee, a special fund for the money. And these projects, they cover the wide range of recreation and parks activities in Petaluma. We've got swimming pool repair. We've got the community center repaired. We've got new ball fields. We've got the replacement of grass with artificial turf in existing ball fields, which allows us to use those ball fields year-round and cuts mowing and watering costs. It's a tremendous benefit for the community. I'm very proud to have been involved in it. And go Measure X. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Renee?
When this idea came forward, I was very supportive. I had been very challenged to see the deferred maintenance that's happened around our parks and our community facilities. So that the citizens came together and created this initiative and brought it forward and got it on the ballot is a huge opportunity for Petaluma to really address this issue in a way that the city hasn't been able to during these tough economic times. So for the future of our city and for the protection of our infrastructure investments, I do hope that residents will vote for this ballot measure. I've been out walking the community and have been including that in my door-to-door and on the cards that we're out delivering to folks and providing information for. So it's a huge opportunity for the city to stop, stop the deferred maintenance bleeding and really start to address some critical infrastructure needs that we're facing throughout the city. And really hope that folks will vote for it. It does have some exemptions that help folks that are having challenging times. And for $52 a year to be able to continue to utilize our great facilities will be very important. Thank you.
Alicia?
I am an early supporter as well. Certainly encourage you all to support Measure X. But where I do want to be cautious is, in the event that the community doesn't embrace Measure X, I want us to be prepared. And so, with that said, we can look at building relationships with nonprofits and our neighbors and businesses coming to our community to ensure that we're able to provide our community and our children with the parks that we all know and love. Thank you.
Jason Davies?
Thanks for the question. Well, I did sign the ballot measure, and yes, I'll be voting for it. And I'm also a big advocate for it. And I've been walking lit as well for it. So hopefully, working together, we're going to make this happen. As a family man, I've got two kids enrolled in public school, eight and 11. And it's critically important to our family, as well as a lot of families I know, to improve our parks. I also like that it's supporting the River Heritage Center, which is a great asset to get more people out on the river. I think that also bolsters tourism, as well as getting people used to the idea of protecting the local environment. When you get in a boat and you're on the river, you really have a direct connection there, and you understand both how important it is as a recreation resource, but also as an environmental resource. I don't know how many options we're going to have if it doesn't pass, but obviously, I would work as hard as I can on the revenue end, driving more revenues into Petaluma, so that we can make up for shortfalls in funding. I have spoken to a couple businesses that have had concerns about it, but I think there's ways to creatively work with them to get them on board. One thing I suggested, actually, to Carol, was some way that we could give businesses some banner advertising or something like that to make up for their concerns. But I'm definitely supportive. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mike Healy?
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely support Measure X. My only regret is that it didn't come along when my kids were younger and able to take advantage of it. But I know other generations will benefit. It really would fund a nice range of upgrades around the community, to the swim center, to playing fields, to the Polyclass Center, to the River Heritage Center. One of the things it also does is it reduces the city's maintenance costs, as Kathy mentioned, you know, replacing grass with field turf. Are you holding that up for me, or? I'm confused.
Give us a few more seconds.
Sorry. And replacing the boilers, the heating equipment at the swim center, which is original equipment, which, you know, hopefully will allow us to extend the season there. And there are other upgrades for the swim center that are already funded. So that's going to be a very improved situation down there. And as has been mentioned, seniors can exempt themselves from this if they want to. And the other thing I would say is that realistically, from my vantage point, there is no Plan B. As you've heard, the city's financial plight is in such a shape that if, as we are able to grow revenues, we're going to be looking at restoring service levels in absolutely essential areas, public safety, streets. And the cuts there have been so steep that I think the foreseeable enhancements that we'll be able to afford over the next few years are going to have to be directed in that direction. And now I'll stop. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. This is a rather lengthy question. This is, first we get a history lesson. In 2008, the City of Petaluma enacted a limited community impact report ordinance, requiring the city council to receive information on certain fiscal and employment impacts of development projects larger than 25,000 square feet. Cities and counties that use community impact reports require that they include other significant community impacts as well. For example, smart growth impacts like access to mass transit, human services, significant housing needs, et cetera. Would you support revising the Petaluma ordinance to include such community impact issues in a more meaningful, comprehensive community impact report? And I want to let all the candidates know, they don't have to use their whole 90 seconds. Okay, we begin with Kathy Miller.
I would, I would support taking a look at it, for sure, and possibly revising it. It's not something that, it's not something that can be answered, I don't think, in 90 seconds. The question, I think, took longer than 90 seconds for you to read. So, yes, I would support revising it if called for and if necessary, after a more thorough review of it. Thank you.
Tiffany Renee?
Thank you. I actually served on the Stakeholders Committee that helped to develop the current economic assessment impact. assessment impact. We unfortunately didn't even call it a community impact report, so I'd start there. I do think that it does need to go wider in terms of looking at community impacts, such as what's been suggested in the question. I also think that because we haven't identified certain things within the community impact report, our citizen groups have utilized the public process in a way to try to achieve their own forms of community benefits agreements. And so looking at a community impact report and going farther and looking at community benefits agreements may be a way that we can stem off some of that, that outside the city process negotiations that have been happening around some of our larger development projects. And so to be able to really look at the issues from the get-go, incorporate those into the project from the beginning and strive to make it a better project and to lessen the impacts on both the city services and what ends up likely being occurring is the county services in the way of health services and social services will certainly have a greater benefit to cities and the county in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Harries.
Yes, I would absolutely support having the discussion and considering the merits of relooking that and moving it on. I mean, in terms of an impact report, I mean, that was, 2008 seems like a long time ago and it was only, what, six years ago? Four years ago, pardon me, can't add. But nonetheless, things have changed drastically. And so, yes, we do, we absolutely need to take into all considerations and this allows people to come and when they want to come to our community, they understand what the parameters are and then it also helps those who are making decisions to understand what the guidelines are. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Jason Davies.
Thanks for the question. Well, in principle, I support the idea. Obviously, I wouldn't want to study projects to death so that they don't move forward, but at the same time, if they're well-executed, I think it can be a good tool to get ahead of issues and understand where the issues might be, you know, long before the project goes further in the process. So I would definitely be supportive in looking at them and look at the possible revisions as well. Thanks.
Mike Keely.
Thank you. So there have been a handful of these fiscal and economic impact reports or community impact reports that have come forward since 2008 and kind of the common theme has been that a lot of people in the community didn't think that the analysis was adequate. And, you know, looking back at them and kind of at a high altitude, I think one of the problems has been, especially with the retail projects, has been we've known at that stage in the process what the anchor tenant was going to be, but we weren't sure who the junior tenants were going to be. So you were, you're trying to figure out what's the impact on downtown. Well, you don't know if they're going to have a shoe store, you don't know if they're going to have this, you don't know if they're going to have a bookstore. So I think that's one of the inherent flaws in the process and I don't know how you fix that particular issue, but I'm certainly willing to, you know, look around and see what best practices are in other communities and see if there are ways that we can improve the process. That's something I think we should be doing generally in all of our areas. So, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabe Kearney.
So in my line of work, I'm in emergency management, we look at disasters and drills and planning for disasters. And when we have a drill, we look at what worked and what didn't work. And so if we have a policy that's currently on the books at the city and we look at, you know, looking back over the past four years, has it worked or has it not worked? And what can we do to improve it? Are there things about it that are working great and we're getting good information and good data from when we do these studies? Let's keep those. Are there things that aren't helpful for us? Let's get rid of those. Anytime we have a policy in government, we should be looking at what are the positives and the negatives and what can we do to change for the better to keep the city moving forward in a positive direction. And so, yes, I'd be in support of looking at that and any other policy we have on the books.
Thank you. And Kathy. I was thinking, did I start with you? I'm writing my notes down.
You started with me.
Okay. I can't add either, it's okay. This is kind of a follow-up. Would you consider compelling big-box stores to provide more money to improve community projects? And, I'm sorry, I can't always read the writing. And make sure they are located further out of town since historically they destroy local small shops and businesses? And we begin with Tiffany.
Could you just repeat the question?
I will. Would you consider compelling big-box stores to provide more money to improve community projects and make sure they are located further out of town?
Okay. Well, I think there's probably two different answers to this question. The first being, in terms of compelling big-box stores to put more money back into the community, it sort of begs the question of what is a big-box store doing to the community in the first place? One of the biggest problems of big-box stores is that they offer very low wage jobs and sort of create sort of a downward spiral. In order to really build up a community, we need quality living wage jobs. And so if big-box stores want to have less of an impact in the community, then they might look at allowing their workers to unionize, not blocking those types of unions in the future and really starting with a living wage to begin with that allows for healthcare and benefits for part-time workers. I've had youth friends of my children who've worked at these situations and it's not any kind of money that you can really sustain yourself or a family, if you have a family as a young adult. So certainly that's one area where you need to deal with that situation. And then putting them farther out, I think, actually creates a larger problem in that then they're less walkable and people have to drive more to them. So being able to create a project that is smart growth-oriented and transit-oriented in the first place is really something that can have a lesser impact on our infrastructure needs. Sorry. You're sort of out of my peripheral view, so apologies.
Alicia Harries.
I think it's important that if you're coming to our community, you're willing to pay a fair share. And what does that look like? Yes, I would like you to add value back into our community because notoriously, yes, big-box stores are required, you have to be in your vehicle. So that means obviously more people on our roads. So then we're dealing with a host of issues in that regard. So I definitely believe that they should be giving back. But I think the larger question we should be asking ourselves is, as candidate Davies mentioned, we have a 30% vacancy rate in our community for commercial structures. And so in my mindset, I believe we should be filling those vacancies before adding new infrastructure, which adds a whole host of new issues to our community that we haven't been able to mitigate. And so, yes, if you're coming to our community, I'd like for you to give us something back if you're taking something away. Thank you.
Jason Davies.
Thanks for the question. Well, you know, I guess it also depends on how you define big-box. I don't look at Freedman's as a big-box, but it's a big center. Target, I guess, could be considered big-box. My wife shops there, I shop there. You know, I thought the project did get better along the way. I think there's obviously some impact fees that a lot of these developers do put in back to the community. I don't know that I'd want to see a Walmart in town. In fact, I'd prefer not to. So I do think we need to kind of talk about what kind of community we want to live in and really get a handle on the reality that a lot of these companies are essentially, they're providing a service, they're providing products to people, which in many cases is good, but we need to balance that as well with the understanding that less of the money actually returns to the local economy. So what I would like to do is have a nice balance so that we have some unique stores that frankly, in many areas, there really aren't other options to some extent. But I also want to make sure that we're, we have a diverse retail market. So as far as compelling, you know, I think that we should look at getting some things out of some of these stores, but I also want to make sure that we look at what kind of community we really want in Petaluma. Thanks.
Mike Keely.
Thank you. So the Target Center and the Freedman Center will each be paying about $6 million in development impact fees, which will allow us to provide a range of infrastructure improvements in the community. So I do think they are paying in quite a bit. As I mentioned before, I don't see any more big-box retail coming to the community. I'll even go further than Jason. I would not support bringing Walmart to Petaluma because the community doesn't want it. And I think this is going to allow us to shift and focus on other things. But at the same time, I have a great deal of hesitation over what's happened with both the Target Center and the Freedman Center with these settlements with private litigants who've dropped their secret challenges that we're not going to go anywhere anyway in exchange for money or improvements. I think that is harmful to our reputation as a place to do business. I realize those have only been in terms of the two big-box centers. There's nothing stopping people like that from doing the same thing with other proposed developments in town that are not big-box and I really wish there was a way that we could stop doing that. Thank you.
Gabe Kearney.
So when we look at attracting businesses to our community, we have to look at having a diverse mix of businesses. Some of those might be places where you can go and buy plywood or might go to buy lumber like Freeman Brothers, which some might characterize as a big-box store. Freeman Brothers is going to be paying impact fees, as was stated, but they're also a great community partner to have in our community. They're already a very large donor to many of the nonprofits in our community and they'll continue to be once they're here. So do I think that they need to pay more than anyone else? No, I think every business that comes to our community needs to pay the impact fees and at the same level, right? We all need to pay our fair share into the impact fees and make sure that we attract businesses that are going to support our community. Freeman Brothers is going to support our community. They already have started to support our community and they will continue to support our community once they're open. When we look at the other shopping center at Regency, we're going to see a lot of income coming into the city, into our general fund that will help improve our community because of the sales tax revenue that we'll see there. So instead of people driving all the way up to Rona Park, they'll be able to drive somewhere here in town and get the things that they've been leaving our community for. And when we look at the Economic Strategic Plan, it calls for these kind of retail mixes and businesses in our community, and that's important.
And Kathy Miller.
So there were two questions. One, can we compel big-box stores to provide more money to improve community projects? They do already pay, just like any business that comes to town, they pay development impact fees. With respect to the Regency Center, I know that in addition to the development impact fees, they are putting solar panels on the swim center and they're replacing the boilers. So they are contributing to our community. They're also, as Mr. Kearney said, filling a retail need that has been missing in this community. With respect to Freedman's, Freedman's is a local business. Yes, it's a big business because if you have a big hardware store and you have a big lumber yard, then yes, you are going to be a big tenant. That doesn't make them a big-box store. And Freedman's has been a strong supporter of our community and I for one am thrilled that they're coming back. With respect to the second part of the question, which was to make sure they're located further out of town, if you have a big lumber yard, then yes, you are going to be a big tenant. That doesn't make them a big-box store. And Freedman's has been a strong supporter of our community and I for one am thrilled that they're coming back. With respect to the second part of the question, which was to make sure they're located further out of town, I think that's the problem. We need some of these businesses in town so we don't have people on the freeway driving up to Target and driving up to Lowe's and driving up to Home Depot to do their shopping. We need to keep that revenue here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. With adequate water supplies never a certainty, how can the city plan to secure sufficient water for its residents and businesses in the coming years? And we begin again with Alicia Harries.
Our water supply, I believe, comes from the Sonoma County Water Agency and we have obviously made a wonderful decision for the Ellis Creek Water Recycling Facility. And what we've been able to do is turn that tertiary water back into something that we can consume. And so I think we have to continue to look at the ability to turn tertiary water into something we can consume, but we also need to partner with the Sonoma County Water Agency and to ensure that we have water in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Davies, same question.
Thank you. Well, obviously, I'm an advocate of water conservation and I appreciate the efforts that the city has done with the Water Wise Program, visiting households, making sure that they're efficient, there's no leaks and things. It's actually a really great program and I was pleased to actually work side-by-side with them at the fairgrounds as part of the Technology Advisory Committee a couple of years back. As far as the Ellis Creek, we are actually treating the water in a tertiary way. As far as, you know, I'm not suggesting for human consumption, I think we're a ways from that, but it can be used and already is being used on certain fields and parks. This also gets back to revenue. I actually think instead of paying for people to take the water, that should be a commodity. We ought to be charging for it. And you could do auctioning of that water and that would get revenue back to help pay for city services. The water, my understanding, comes from the Russian River. Again, we do need to make sure we conserve and I think there's more effort that we can do in that regard, but we do have a stellar plant that is also upgradable and down the road, if we really needed, we could get it to a point where that could actually be consumable. So that's a possibility. Thanks.
Mike Keely.
Thank you. I actually serve as the city's representative to the Water Advisory Committee of the Sonoma County Water Agency and I've been doing that for the last two years. All the water providers in Sonoma County, under state law, do a 20-year forecast and they update it every five years. And what's interesting is the current one compared to the last one, the out-year forecast is down substantially because it's now becoming clear that people are conserving more than we ever thought they would before. So the kind of infrastructure we need to build to support that use is probably coming down. We're probably not going to need $140 million Dry Creek Bypass. That's a good thing because you won't have to pay for it. On the other hand, all of our water is coming through something called the Petaluma Aqueduct, which is a pipeline that goes north from here. It's 52 years old. It had a 50-year design life when it was built and it's not just the infrastructure that you can see that you need to worry about. So we need to worry and I need to be focusing on ways to extend the life of that thing. And so I certainly, you know, with the sewer plant's ability to treat, create tertiary treated wastewater, the new vineyard you see going up on the eastern edge of the community is going to be irrigated with that. We have the ability to irrigate the golf courses and playgrounds. We don't drink the stuff. It's purple pipes, it's not going to show up in your faucet, but I think our future on the water side is pretty bright.
Thank you. Gabe Kearney.
So for the past year and a half, I've been serving as Mike's alternate on that Water Advisory Committee and I get to see all the policies that are coming forward from the county, the Sonoma County Water Agency and see that we do have a dire need to improve our infrastructure. We have seen great improvements in our treatment capabilities at the plant and we're going to see more water going out that is recycled water, but we need to continue to do the efforts that we have already started with conservation. It was great today, I was here in City Hall and got to see someone coming in and getting a rebate for switching to a low, no, not a low flow, a high-efficiency washing machine. You know, continuing programs like that to get folks to use less water is going to be important as we continue on. That is, you know, a simple fix like that saves a huge amount of water throughout the year. As we can, if we continue to promote those programs, continue to get people to use less water in the houses, you know, we will see less need for water. water in the houses, uh, you know, we will see less need for water and a longer, uh, amount of water, uh, available to, longer term amount of water available to us. Uh, additionally, looking at our wells here in the community, making sure our wells are, uh, sound and have a long-term viability, and, and our pumping stations are available to, to distribute the water. Thank you.
Kathy Miller.
So, we purchase our water from the Sonoma County Water Agency, or most of it, and, and I think that by the Ellis Creek Water Plant coming on, online, that we've really done a tremendous job in, in sort of reducing, um, some of the water that we need to buy. We've got, um, recycled water. Um, to give you an example of where we're using recycled water, um, the golf courses, two of the golf courses in town, on the east side of town, um, are almost, are primarily using recycled water for their irrigation needs. Um, we need to replace pipes, so we can, um, get recycled water to other parts of, of, of the community, um, and that's kind of an ongoing process, and, and it's an expensive process. Um, and we also are selling water to ranches and, and, um, other agricultural concerns, and I think that's a good, that's a good step, too. So, um, all of those things will go towards reducing our water costs and, um, help us secure water for residents and businesses in the coming years.
Tiffany Renee.
Thank you. I was, um, very active in working on our general plan process as a community member when we really established high levels of, uh, water conservation for the city, and it was an exciting time to really see those policies get set in place, and to be able to work on them while I've been on City Council. I, um, am a big proponent of our conservation measures. I think that we've been able to partner with some, uh, local organizations that have done incredible jobs in being able to carry that message out to the community, and to provide low-cost solutions for people to learn how to, uh, reconfigure their yards and their landscape to reduce our, their water costs to begin with. Additionally, I think we're going to need to look at stormwater maintenance going forward, and to be able to address that with our homeowners and businesses in ways that they can continue to reduce their irrigation costs will be key. And then, you know, slowing, sinking, spreading that water, and recharging our aquifers is also going to be key. We have been able to increase our ability to provide a higher quality water product to the agricultural community and the recreational users by moving from a secondary quality of water to a tertiary quality of water. It's a better product, and, um, the consumer at the end result of the agricultural side, uh, I think will benefit from that as well. And it continues to feed into the whole economic system of being able to improve our agricultural industry. So, um, it's, it's an exciting time for, for water quality issues.
Thank you. We need more police to deal with methamphetamine and other crime problems. What are your solutions? And we begin with Jason Davies.
It's a good question. Actually, I just, uh, recently had a great meeting, uh, with our new chief, Patrick Williams, and I asked him about that, uh, very same question. Uh, one of the problems is, we've had some cuts, and, uh, the police have actually taken more cuts, uh, than fire. It's, it's unfortunate for anybody to take cuts, uh, in public safety, uh, but that was one of the things that they lost, a DARE officer, uh, for, uh, drug prevention. Um, I think what we need to do is work as much as we can, uh, with the public, and, uh, there are some volunteer programs out there that, uh, through DARE that we can address. Uh, but we also need to, uh, support youth services, uh, that provide alternatives for people at risk. Uh, I think there's a lot more that we can do in that regard. Obviously, it, it's hard when we don't have, uh, as much budget for it. But, um, getting officers back into schools, uh, is another thing that we could be doing. Uh, but reaching out, doing more training, town halls, uh, making sure that parents know how to look at the warning signs, uh, so that we can catch these, uh, issues early, uh, and, uh, stem that problem.
Mike Healy. Same question.
Thank you. The, um, Police Department, if I recall the current budget correctly, is, is down a total of, uh, 29 positions, maybe one, one or two more than that at this point from the peak. Not all those are sworn officers, but many of them are. Um, and, and that's a huge hit, um, to that department, and so there are a lot of services that have been reduced. Um, we, we don't have the officers in the schools, we, we have not been able to do the, the Drug and Gang Task Force. Um, and, and those are real impacts on the community, and you really do not want to get into a situation where the bad guys know you're a soft target, um, that if they want to get away with something, they should come to your community as opposed to somewhere else. So, I think that's a huge problem. Um, you, you know, we, we could just try to, um, make that a priority as revenues come back. Um, I don't think that's going to get us to where we need, where we need to be fast enough. Um, I, I do support giving our voters an opportunity to do what other communities in the region have done, Santa Rosa, Cotati, um, Runner Park, uh, Sonoma, Nevado, San Rafael, and enact, uh, a temporary sales tax for a number of years, maybe eight years, to bridge us over this, this, uh, this L-shaped, uh, recovery that we're experiencing these days, and allow us to actually fill some of those positions and get service levels back to where they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabe Kearney.
So, uh, I agree that we do have some, some really tough challenges with our staffing in the Police Department. Uh, I don't agree that methamphetamine is our biggest problem in this community. I think that prescription drug abuse is a bigger problem, especially, especially with our youth. Uh, and, you know, that's from my experience working, uh, not only in the emergency department, but on the ambulances. The way to look at prevention is through a comprehensive, uh, model of prevention that incorporates not only the DARE officers in the school, uh, in the elementary school level, the school resource officers at our junior highs and high schools, but also incorporates a police athletic league, uh, like many other communities have done. Uh, if we look at comprehensive approaches, where we're looking at prevention from all through the life cycle of that youth, uh, they're going to be less likely to get involved with drugs. Uh, the other thing we need to look at doing is investing in, in the upstream, right? So if we invest at an early age, making sure we have literacy programs in our schools, uh, similar to Schools of Hope, which I'm a volunteer for, uh, we get kids on an equal playing field to have a great chance at succeeding in life, and having a great chance of going on to college, and, and, and are less likely to get into the problems with drugs and alcohol abuse, which, you know, does affect our community. Uh, but in order to get to that, we need to have more revenue coming into the city, as has been stated numerous times. Thank you.
Kathy Miller.
Okay, and I'm going to start with the revenue piece. We, we do, we have these unfilled frozen vacancies in our Police Department, and we've got to bring some revenues in, because we've got to fill those vacancies. Um, I have two children. One of them received DARE training, the other one didn't, because between the first child and the second child, the funding for that, for that program was eliminated. Um, you know, we need to have dedicated gang task force officers here in town, and we don't, we, we don't have those anymore. Um, we need to have somebody who's, who's working on domestic violence issues. Uh, we've got to have school resource officers. Um, it does need to be a, an ongoing training for our kids. It needs to start when they're young, it needs to continue through high school, because that's how we keep them on the right path. And it needs to be information that's available to them in the schools and in the community. So we really do have to figure out a way to fill these, these vacancies in our Police Department to get some of these programs back. Um, our children, our children are counting on us to do that, and they're depending on us to do that, and, and we just have to figure out a way to get it done. Thank you.
Tiffany Renee.
Thank you. This is actually a very exciting question, because we have been able to bring someone on staff recently that is going to fulfill something that I've wanted to see for this city for quite a long time, and that's community policing. Um, that's really about working smarter instead of harder with the resources that we have, and Chief Williams is the person that's going to be able to implement that for us. I think that he looked at our community and he saw what I've seen, and that is our incredible ability to collaborate. And so, um, he has a plan to be able to go out into the communities and work with neighbors, work with, um, schools, work with, uh, religious institutions and other organizations to come together and address the challenges that are happening neighborhood by neighborhood. And by doing that, we can really do crime prevention, uh, and, and be able to work on the issues that tend to be chronic issues, and, and come up with solutions to be able to address those problems. So, it's an exciting time for Petaluma, and I'm very excited to have Chief Williams on staff, and, um, to have been encouraging of that, that police hire. Uh, of course, we, we do have revenue challenges, and, um, to be able to increase our staff is a goal, and I've been able to really protect the staff that we've had since we've been on council by keeping our budget margins as slim as they have been, so that we don't have to do layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you. Knowledge and sensitivity, oh, Alicia, I'm sorry. See? All I have to do is keep track, and I lost it.
I did a ride-along, actually, with the Petaluma Police Department in, uh, June, and I spent time in the Fishbowl, and then I did the ride-along, and I'm acutely aware that they are operating absolutely at minimal threshold. And so what do we do about that? We have an opportunity. We could increase revenues if we increased our transit-oriented tax, which would tax people coming to our community. It doesn't tax us as residents, but that would put revenue stream into our general fund. And we continue to need to have dialogue with the Police Department. I live off Lake Horns Park, and I, I see activity. My mom lives with me, we see things all the time, and we call the Police Department. And that's what we have to do. We have to continue having conversations and going back to educating our youth, and providing them with outlets to ensure that they're getting educated early and often, and we're addressing the outstanding problems that may be faced in our community. Thank you.
Knowledge and sensitivity are required to make decisions in a city with a population of 58,000. What informational sources, values, research, and other input do you or would you use to make up your mind or even change your mind on issues? And we begin with Mike.
So that's the first non-economic question we got.
I'm sure it ends up economic.
No. Um, so I, you know, the thing I love about this community is it's, it's so networked at so many different levels. It is a town, a city, as, as was mentioned, of 58,000. It operates as a village of 6,000 in terms of the nonprofits and the community organizations, and people knowing each other from when their kids were on Little League teams, uh, together, and, and churches, and, and schools, and everything else. So, it's an incredibly networked community, um, for a, a city of its size. Um, so, you know, I, I have the sense, people, people don't hesitate to contact me when they want to talk about something. I, I wish they would actually do it more frequently than they do. Um, but, but my, my phone numbers, uh, my home number's listed, my office number's listed, my email's easy to find. Um, and so, the other thing is, you know, I, I have, um, a kind of an interesting background. I, my undergraduate degree was economics, I went and got a master's degree in engineering, and then after working as an engineer for several years, I went back to law school. So, I kind of look at things in a multidisciplinary way. You know, the question came up earlier about water supply. You know, and as Petaluma's representative to the Water Advisory Committee, I go to these meetings, and they're filled with civil engineers, and I love civil engineers, but they tend to think they have all the answers in their little toolbox. And, and economists have this thing called price elasticity of demand, and they really need to think about that, and in terms of their, 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 their long-range forecast, because if you keep raising the price, people are going to use less of it. And, and that's, that's kind of a concept for them to get their arms around. So, I, I try to bring a multidisciplinary approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabe.
So, you know, we, every week that we have a meeting, we get our packet on a, a Tuesday, and then revisions on Thursday. And it, it's important that you go through and you read all the information available, and you use your time wisely to contact the staff, uh, and reach out to the folks that are writing those reports. If you're telling me to stop already, it's not really fair, miss. Uh, that's two times tonight. Uh, but you have to take the time to reach out to the staff and get the information and ask the questions about it. You know, we, we had a budget, uh, budgetary, uh, allocation for a new ambulance, and so I had questions about it. I called up the chief, asked him the questions I had about the ambulance, what kind we were getting, why were we getting that kind, went and looked on the website to look at the exact model, and, you know, you use that, uh, information to help you make that decision. You also use the community members. Uh, every night after work, sometimes during the day, I, I'm away from work, going to community events, reaching out to different groups, listening to the concerns that they have, and hearing your neighbors and the other people around you, uh, tell you about what it is that's going on in the community that impacts them and affects them. And that's what's important to this job, being willing to listen to anyone in the community at any time, to hear what they have to say, and to be respectful of their opinion, even though it might differ from yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And anytime anyone needs the question repeated, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, it's a community of volunteers, and it's a very connected community, and that's one of my favorite things about living here, is, is you do, you know people from your kid's Little League, and you know people from school, and you know people from your business, and you know people from your, your community volunteering efforts, and, and it's a great community for that. And, and what I like about the community is people are passionate about Petaluma and what goes on here in Petaluma. And so I think to be an effective City Council member, you have to be willing to talk to everybody, you have to be willing to listen to everybody, you have to be willing to understand other people's viewpoints, even if they're different from your own. You have to be willing to have a, a dialogue with people to try and reach a compromise, or if you're not able to reach a compromise, to just reach an agreement to disagree. And sometimes that happens. But you have to be, um, you have to be willing to listen to everyone, and I, I, one of my favorite things about running for election is I've been out in the community, and I've been out talking to people about me, and I've been out talking to people about Measure X, and I really like the passion that I'm finding from people about issues in the community, and, and I'm enjoying talking to them and getting their feedback, and I would continue to do that if elected as a councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Renee.
Thank you. This is a great question. I'm a voracious reader. Um, I, um, have really sought connections out on the internet with people of different minds, um, to be able to get exposed to different ideas and utilize that on a daily basis to feed information and, and learn from other people. Um, I'm, I'm an avid lifelong learner and, um, support the learning process with others as well. I come from a very diverse family, both culturally and politically, so I grew up at the dinner table having quite extensive arguments and, um, and discussions with people who may have had a very different view from my own, and really enjoy that, that engagement. And so I, I seek opportunities and I'm out in the community frequently, looking for the ability to talk with people and engage with people on the issues, and it's something that really, um, inspires and is a passion for me. Um, my, my mom has come to town, and we've gone out walking in the downtown, and, and I've been stopped numerous times, and, you know, at, at the lunch table and that sort of thing, and she just sort of rolls her eyes, because I really love that ability to, to engage and, and talk with people here in the community about the issues that are of concern to them. So, um, you know, it's, it's really about what we're able to put into, into our minds and being open to, uh, to what's out there, so that we can learn and grow, and, and that's the perspective that I've taken since I've been here on City Council as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Harris.
I think the greatest value that I have, um, in terms of relationships and sensitivity are those that, um, are completely unique and different from my own perspective. And, uh, often you have to get outside of your comfort zone to have that experience, but that's important, because that's what forges a great community. And of course, you have to continue to read and educate, but it's that differing opinion, uh, that makes it all worthwhile in the end, and it raises us up, uh, as individuals, and it allows us to have, uh, a greater capacity for compassion and empathy, and, uh, that's what's important to me.
Thank you. Jason Davies.
Thanks for the question. Uh, well, one of the most important things, obviously, is to, uh, be able to listen, uh, to people, and be able to communicate with a variety of people that may disagree. I've had a lifetime of experience, uh, in doing that. My, my first job, when I was actually still in high school, uh, I was a waiter, actually before that I was a busboy. Actually before that I was a busboy. And so I had to serve people. Later I got into the technology field. I started at the, at the ground level in technical support. And people aren't usually calling technical support when everything's just dandy. They're calling when there's problems. And you have to be able to deal with people that may not be in such a happy mood all the time or may not necessarily agree with even your efforts to try to help them. But I'm extremely tenacious and I like people. I've spent all my life working with people, serving people. I lived in Europe for two years, opening up an office for a company. I traveled pretty much through every Western and even Eastern European country. So I know how to deal with people of all types of diversities and different opinions and things. I've traveled all over the U.S. So it's exposed me to a lot of different views. I've worked hundreds of trade shows, done a lot of marketing sales and business development. And these are all skills that are very relevant. And I've enjoyed precinct walking and learning more about people in the community. Not everyone thinks the same, but it's important to listen and to be able to learn and form good decisions. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question. Will you support the continued appeal against the Dutra asphalt plant? And we begin with Gabe.
So I'll give you 85 seconds back. Yes?
Thank you. Kathy Miller.
Wow, I didn't even have time to gather my thoughts, Gabe. Yes, I do support the continued appeal against the Dutra asphalt plant.
Thank you. Tiffany Renee.
Wow. Well, as someone that has been working on this issue for several years now, I am an avid supporter of the opposition for the Dutra asphalt plant. I was so disturbed by a letter from our supervisor in the newspaper that I spent a weekend writing, drafting a letter that eventually became the document that our council unanimously supported in opposition of Dutra. And it's been a big concern for me. It's something that I raised in my congressional race as well because the issue really goes beyond just our own little town, but it's really about air quality and quality of life and how it impacts the community. And so not only do I support the appeal, but, you know, I've been actively educating myself on this issue to try to look at ways that we can advocate for the region because this isn't the only plant that's being implemented. There are two other plants within, I believe, 65 miles that are either upgrading or going in. And so you have to question, what does that do to our air quality and how can we, how can we advocate for ourselves at the national level to really address this issue? So I look forward to working with our state and federal legislators on that issue so that it's not just fighting the one plant, but it's really protecting our quality of life while into the future.
Thank you. Alicia Kay Harris.
Yes, I do support ongoing litigation. And I'll sum it up simply that I don't believe that the forefathers of Petaluma and Sonoma County foresaw an asphalt plant as the gateway, as the entryway to the gateway of, to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Davies.
Thank you for the question. Well, I think most people who know me know that I've been very involved in this issue since I first became aware of it when I was teaching my kids how to ride their bicycles in Schoenberger Park. And I saw a sign that said, oh, there's this asphalt plant coming. And my older sister said, oh, there's nothing you can do. And I said, well, wait a minute, the sign said I should go to City Hall and speak up about it. So that's what I did. And I spoke on behalf of the business that I was working at. We were trying to attract more employees. And one of the great things about this, this area, obviously, as I've mentioned before, is the quality of life and this would be extremely detrimental to it. I think it's, it's interesting also to hear people, it's great that they've been listening to the community and now, now they say that they're in favor of the appeal. But I've also not seen them at county hearings where it would have been great to have them. I tried to get all of the council members to actually speak out at the county hearings. I know that at least one council member that's here was actually focusing more on stopping the casino and wasn't able to be there. I do think that we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in had we shown a unified force at the county. I also know there's a council member sitting right there who is not in favor of the appeal. I'm glad to say that we've actually been working hard and I've been part of a fundraising effort so it's not costing the city money. And actually, when we're successful, we're going to get the money back. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike Healy.
Thank you. So, yeah, I do support the, the city's continued participation in the, the appeal of the Dutra asphalt plant. The money that the city has spent has been difficult to part with given our other priorities, but I do know that it's an important priority for the community. I do appreciate the, the private groups who have agreed to fund $10,000 of the appeal. I actually feel strongly enough about the issue that I drilled in and after reading the trial court's decision focused on one aspect of the whole thing and that's the Brown Act issue. And so I filed an amicus brief at no cost to the city, dozens and dozens of hours into that one. And it really raises the Brown Act issue. And the problem there was that there were two hearings before the Board of Supervisors and at the first meeting, they allowed public comment. In the second meeting, they said, no, we don't have to allow public comment. Public comment was closed two months ago. And I don't think the Brown Act says that. And if you look at the statute, it only allows them to cut off comment at the second meeting if the first meeting was a meeting of a committee. There was no committee here. And I think when the legislature meant, said the word committee, they meant committee. Those of us who got elected to public office, when, when we have people in the audience who want to come and talk to us and use their three minutes to share their thoughts, that's what we got elected for. We need to listen to them.
Thank you. How can Petaluma maintain its small town qualities while meeting affordable housing and economic development needs? We begin with Kathy Miller.
Well, I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job of maintaining our, our small town qualities. Our downtown is, is a jewel. It is, people come from all over to shop in our downtown. And I think we need to, to maintain it just the way it is. We, I think as, as Councilmember Healy has said, we're not looking at any more large retail development in town. We have these two large retail development centers going in. They're along the freeway. They are not, they're not downtown. I, I've heard people say, well, well, if these come in, how are we going to not have a Costco in downtown? Well, we're not going to have a Costco in downtown because the general plan doesn't allow us to have a Costco in downtown. And when I was on the planning commission, we went through the entire public hearing process and that, the, the general plan gives you the blueprint for development and, and going forward in Petaluma. And it's really clear. So, so I think we're able to maintain our small town character and still grow in other areas of, of town in accordance with the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Renee.
Thank you. I was very excited when I got on council to be able to support the extension of time on our urban growth boundary. I think that our urban growth boundary is something that really protects our city from urban sprawl and creates that ability for us to focus our development towards the interior. And continuing, continuing along those lines, we've been able to look at priority development areas through the Association of Bay Area Governments. And this is really another key to continuing to maintain that, that small town feel, creating walkable neighborhoods and transit oriented projects that make it easier for people to get on the train or get on the bus to get to their jobs rather than trying to build more road infrastructure in outlying areas and, you know, distancing people from each other. Really focusing our, our growth on the interior is creating those abilities for people to connect and, and create that, that, that real social atmosphere that keeps people connected and keeps people aware of what's going on and, and builds what, what I like to call social capital. We, we have organizations that do that and as long as we can continue to protect those, those resources through our urban growth boundary and focusing on infill development, I think that we can continue to see a vibrant community here in Petaluma.
Thank you. Alicia Kay Harris.
I think Theater Square is a prime example of, of our ability to have what's considered live work because you can play there as well and that allows us to have housing, that allows us to have business. And those are the kind of projects that I'd like to see come forward in our community. And when we think about, going back to economic development and things that are driving our local economy, I think we have to continue to preserve and protect our downtown, which is a rich and vital resource. And we need to capitalize on that and boost our tourism and encourage our burgeoning Petaluma Wine Gap area and encourage businesses such as Cowgirl Creamery and things of that nature that, that will just take people out of what they know when they're coming to our community. And what sets us apart is why they leave their residential areas because they want something different and we have that to offer. And I think we have to continue to ensure that we're protecting and preserving the businesses that we already have in play. Thank you.
Jason Davies.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
I think I can. How can Petaluma maintain its small town qualities while meeting affordable housing as well as economic development needs?
Great. So we actually do have some good housing options in Petaluma and I'm supportive of the central specific plan and developing in a more transit oriented mode. I do think that the infill development priorities make sense. I would like to see more affordable housing actually concentrated towards where there's public transportation as well because I think those go hand in hand. And I think it also adds to the richness of the community in having different socioeconomic groups living together. So essentially I would be supporting the general plan with those types of projects. I know obviously there's, there's funding challenges and things. Some of the housing developments were postponed, but as the economy turns and we can drive more revenue, we can have more of that development. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike Healy.
Thank you. It's a multi-part question. I, I think that people need to realize that the urban growth boundary that we have around this community that's in place now until the expiration of our general plan in 2025 is actually drawn very tightly. You could count the number of parcels around the periphery of the city that are developable, significant parcels on your fingers and have fingers left. So the, the main future development is going to be directed internal. I served on the central, central specific plan advisory committee back in the day. I'm thrilled with what we were able to achieve with the theater district. I remember when the Superb Seven came into our meetings and spoke at that microphone and lobbied for a movie theater for downtown and look where we got. And the plan is to continue that kind of three to five story pedestrian friendly mixed use development down towards the train station and into some of those other underutilized areas in, in the core of the city. I think the city has a very admirable track record in delivering affordable housing and also in scattering it around the community so that we don't have one part of town that's the parking lot for all the, the affordable housing. It's, it's one of the nice things about our community. There isn't a, a good side of the tracks and a bad side of the tracks. I do think we're going to be challenged to continue delivering affordable housing. The redevelopment was a source of a, a big chunk of the money we've been used for, been using for groups like PEP and we need to find a replacement vehicle. And I hope the state of California does that when they get out of their current crisis.
Thank you. Gabe Kearney.
What makes this community great is not the plans that we have, which, you know, historically we've gone all the way to the Supreme Court to fight for. It's the people. The people that are here in this audience tonight, the people that sit on boards and committees to help improve this community, the people that come to committee hearings, community hearings on, on projects. I remember going to what is now TAPS and, you know, we all got our, our posted notes to put on which river plan we wanted to see for Water Street. You know, that's what makes this community great is how many people we have that are active and participate. The people that volunteer and step up to donate $70,000 to make sure the families of our national Little League team can go and see their kids play. That's what makes this community great. If we continue to work around the general plan, the central specific plan and do our best to bring in revenue so we can afford to build that affordable housing, we're going to continue to have a great community. Thank you.
Thank you. This was a one-minute response. What do you bring to the council or what would you bring to the council that would help develop the revenue that's so badly needed? And we begin with Tiffany Renee.
Thank you. As a small business owner and someone who's worked in technology and as someone who's worked in the ways to help other businesses start up their organizations, branding and graphic and web design, I believe that I have an important skill set to offer to the city. As well, I have a background in women's studies and integral ecology in a master's level. And throughout my education, I focused on planning issues. And so being able to see, see the issues that we're facing in a systematic way, I believe that I can see where things connect and where we can be efficient. And, and I have the real life experiences that are needed in these difficult economic times. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Kay.
As I mentioned, I am a nearly 20-year business professional. I have worked on the East Coast and I have worked on the West Coast. I've worked in businesses such as the National Hockey League, FAO Schwarz and Morgan Stanley. I've worked on Main Street, I've worked on Wall Street and I understand the value of both. And so when we talk about economic drivers, I get it, I understand. I sit in, in staff meetings every week and I, I know where shortfalls are and I know where you have to make cuts. And so the value of having me as your council member is someone who has been in the business world for 20 years. And beyond that, I'm a community advocate, I'm a volunteer, and I've sat up here as your planning commissioner. And so it's important to have a well-rounded individual who has been to every single side of the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason.
Thanks for the question. Well, I've been in executive level positions as a business development executive in multiple companies. I've had international experience as well. I have a strong background in marketing. I am also a business owner as well as an entrepreneur. I just started a media technology firm. I have experience working on the Technology Advisory Committee. I know how to market. The city in their business attraction program recently did some outreach and one of the number one reasons that, or excuse me, one of the number one requests that businesses had was better marketing. And so at this time, when we need to be really rolling out a strong business retention, attraction and expansion program, we need people that have these types of skills and I'm uniquely qualified to bring that to the council. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike.
Thank you. Well, I had talked before about my multidisciplinary background. I've been on the council for 12 years. I've served on every committee known to man. And, and, you know, I think in, in terms of the, the economic challenges to the community, a lot of them really come down to infrastructure. There, there were times in the past where we had a sewer plant that was falling apart and was not going to last. It was 70 years old. We've, we've checked that off the list. We were at a point where we were very concerned about our long-term water security and sources. That has, is, is in the process of dissipating. I think it will continue as we do our next five-year update to, to not be a problem. Transportation continues to be a challenge for, for the region and for our community, but that's where I want to focus a lot of attention. And that, that really makes the, improves the, the business climate and makes people want to come here and stay here and grow their companies and grow their families here. And that's what we want, want to have here.
Thank you. Gabe.
In 2000, I went through the Leadership Petaluma Program and you get to see this great mix of all of the different types of businesses and industries in the community and you get to learn about them. When you're up here on the council, you need to have the background and the knowledge to understand the bigger picture of what's going on in our community and have the knowledge... to understand the bigger picture of what's going on in our community and have the knowledge of the different industries in our community. Well, my experience has been mainly in healthcare. We have had a sick business industry in the community. And I think since I've been on the council, it's been proven that I vote for policies that are going to help our community to grow businesses and to allow the businesses to expand and make it so it's not cheaper for them to move somewhere else. And that's what's important when you're sitting up here making the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
I have large and small-business experience, and we need that kind of experience on our council. I've served on numerous community boards, so I'm familiar with the challenges of running both for-profit businesses and nonprofit businesses. I have a very broad background that I think the council needs, that we need people who have common sense, and we need people who have demonstrated leadership skills. And we need people who are realistic about what we can and can't do. And I'm one of those people. I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and get down to work and work with everybody in the community to try and make this the best place for all of us to live. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the question-and-answer period, and we will now begin with the closing statements. That was almost a closing statement. We begin with the closing statements that you've prepared or otherwise, and you each have one minute. And we begin with Alicia K. Harries.
Again, I am Alicia K. Harries, and I am running for Petaluma City Council. I want to impart that I think we're all aware of how extremely lucky we are to live in this community. We have a great deal to offer to our residents and for those who are visiting our town. And I'm asking for your vote because I believe that we need leadership that is willing to represent us in a way that is asking the tough questions and making hard decisions in a way that's raising us up and moving us forward. We need to build on what we already have to ensure that Petaluma continues to be a wonderful place that we know and love. You can always count on me to listen, learn, and represent you as a council member that seeks the maximum public benefit with the least possible effects. It's a pleasure being part of this forum, and I want to thank you, everyone tonight and those watching remotely, for staying involved and engaged in our community. My name is Alicia K. Harries, and I am running for Petaluma City Council. To learn more, please visit me at aliciackharries.com. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. I'm going to give everybody another 15 seconds. Okay, Jason Davies.
Thank you very much. Well, I've really appreciated this evening. I have a vested stake in this community. I came here back in 2000 with my wife. I am happy to say we've been married for 15 years, and we've got two kids. I had them, or she had them. She did all the hard work. At Petaluma Valley Hospital, actually, that was one of the first things that got me involved in politics, is there was a concern that they were going to shut down the maternity ward there just before we were going to have our child. So I was suggested by our nurse to come over and speak at a healthcare forum that was on that very topic here in the council chambers. I'm pleased to say that a number of us spoke up, and I was able to have our second child as well as our first one there. I'm vested here. I'm a native of the San Francisco Bay Area, so I've been in California most of my life. But I've also traveled the world, and I have an international perspective as well. And my academic background is also in policy and planning as well as politics. So I think I bring a good mix of business development experience and high tech and other aspects as well as experience here in Petaluma as a resident. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike Healy.
So I'm a native of Sonoma County. I grew up in Santa Rosa, graduated from Santa Rosa High School, moved to Petaluma in 1982. My wife Beth and I will be celebrating our 22nd anniversary in 10 days. And I just love this community. And everyone on this dais is running because they want to give back to this community, and it's a great thing. And it's just such a wonderful community to live in and to raise the next generation in. You know, every time I've run up till now, I've always been endorsed for everything I've run by both the Press Democrat and the Argus Courier. And sadly, that tradition now has to come to an end because they're not doing that anymore, and I'm sure there are other people happier about that than I am. But I am endorsed by both the Petaluma Firefighters and the Petaluma Police Officers Association and by our next congressman, who's a Democrat, Jared Huffman. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabe Kearney.
I had the great privilege of growing up in this community, and I love this community greatly. I've been serving this community for the past 12 years in some way, shape, or form, whether it's on a community board or volunteering, serving pancakes at the Relay for Life. Whatever it is I'm doing, I'm putting everything I have into it and to making sure this community continues to be the place I knew and loved growing up here and that my friends and maybe I someday have the opportunity to raise a family here. That's what's important to me, and that's why I'm running for a full four years on the city council, and hopefully in November, you'll vote for me. And hopefully, you'll be joining the Petaluma Police Officers Association, the Petaluma Firefighters Association, the Sonoma County Young Democrats, our next congressman, Jared Huffman, and our state senator, Mark Leno, in supporting me. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Miller.
First, I'd like to thank the American Association of University Women, the League of Women Voters of Sonoma County, and the Argus Courier for sponsoring this forum. I'd like to thank our moderator, Kathy Schmidt, as well, and PCA Channel 28 and KCRB for broadcasting this. I'd also like to thank all of you who have stayed out here till the end and those of you who are watching at home on your TV. I'm excited to be running for city council. I've lived here 12 years, and I've been involved in the community from the day I moved here. Like I said earlier, my husband and I came here because we thought it would be a terrific place to raise our kids, and it has been. And I love Petaluma, just like everybody else up here does, and that's why we're all running. I have the common sense, the experience and leadership skills to serve you on the city council, and I would really appreciate your support. I too have been endorsed by the firefighters and the police officers, and I thank them very much for that endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Renee.
Thank you. I'm running because I have the real-life experiences that Petaluma needs right now. I've been working very hard to protect our quality of life, to create jobs, and to give voice to those that are struggling in these economic times. I've been endorsed by the Sonoma County Democrats, Senator Mark Leno, Assembly Member Michael Allen, Congresswoman Lynn Woolsey, the Sonoma County Conservation Action, Sierra Club, North Bay Labor Council, and many others. I am asking for your vote to keep me working for you. I've been serving in this community for over 20 years. I've lived in Petaluma for 23 years. And among the organizations that I have been working on include co-founding the Technology Advisory Committee and serving on that for three years. I'm a former commissioner with the Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women and a former co-president of AAUW. I'm a fellow of the Leadership Institute for Ecology and the Economy and a longtime parent volunteer. Please visit votfortif.com or call me at 707-766-9917.
Thank you all. Actually, you all did a great job of staying on task and following the timekeepers, even when we waved. I want to thank the candidates for their participation tonight, for giving us a choice and for being so willing to serve. And I know we can only choose three of you. I hope that everyone remembers to vote on November 6th. On behalf of our sponsors, which Kathy just named again, League of Women Voters, AAUW, and the Petaluma Argus Courier, we want to say thank you so much for helping us put this on. We will be televised PCA on Channel 27. I was told ATT U-verse is going to televise it. I don't know on what channel. KRCB, Channel 22, on October 14th in the morning at 8:00. And the league website, which is a great place to go, www-smartvoter.org, they will run this, and they will also list the times that it's running in other locations. So again, from Petaluma City Council, thank you, and don't forget to vote.